Twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Bixson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Here.
Councilmember Hauser.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
King.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
And Trent.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Welcome on a beautiful night. Next, we have public comment, scheduled, non-scheduled. Is there any public comment tonight for something that's not on the agenda? Megan, are you out there?
She's in her office.
Okay. Doesn't, doesn't look like it.
Yeah, she's talking. Looks like she's talking, but we don't hear her.
Are you muted? Unmute?
City manager's on mute.
Oh, it's muted. Yeah.
Megan.
There she goes.
Meg?
Yes.
Anything tonight?
No, no one is currently online. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes, the special meeting on September fourteenth and September sixteenth.
So moved.
Motion by the Mayor Protem.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Mr. Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is consideration to approve the third annual Frozen Paw Five K two thousand twenty-five. Next is consideration to approve the Fall Football Frenzy Five K event. And finally, consideration to approve the Heroes versus Villains Kids One Mile Fun Run. Council?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
motion by Councilmember Trent.
The three events.
Support by Councilmember Jones.
And I just want to make a comment.
Comment?
Just, I printed out the two pages. I just want to say how much our park is used is pretty incredible. Like, how blessed are we to have that? And all the runs, and I can't even keep track of everything going on. So just, we are grateful for our park. And then also for the police and fire department, the DPW, who almost every one of these events has to put on extra man-hours. So, thank you to all.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. There's no old business or table items. There's no public hearing. First, legislative deliberation is consideration of an ordinance amendments adding section eight through nine, feeding of animals. First reading and introduction. Mr. City Manager, do you want, Mr. City Attorney?
Yep, Mr. Our city attorney's going to take over.
Give us a overview.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council. At the last several meetings, there's been a number of discussions regarding the cat issue, and that has, that led to a request for me and administration to come up with a, an ordinance. In fact, Commissioner Hauser did provide a sample, one of Dearborn Heights, that dealt with ground feeding of animals and of feral and welcome community cats as well. I've heard that term. And so what we've done is put together a proposed ordinance. Section, excuse me, chapter eight of the city code refers to our animal regulations. And so I put in there just the captions of sections eight point one through eight point eight, just so you can see all the different topics that we talk about in that section. And so this one, we added to the end of that, which would be section eight dash nine regarding feeding of animals. There's really two different provisions in here. One is it prohibits the feeding of wild animals. I'll just put that, you know, we list a great number of different animals that could be fed. So this doesn't deal with pets. It deals with wild animals. And, but then the other part of that, as well as, because we have a lot of bird feeders, that people like to feed birds, so we wouldn't want to exclude that from a proper bird feeder. So that's the section A two limitation. And then B is specifically prohibiting the unlawful feeding of feral or stray cats and dogs. And I did have at least one question regarding that in line of the discussion of the trap neuter release provision. So there is a, there is an exception in there. You can't do that without city approval. And so I know that from listening to conversations, if, as part of trapping, you need to put food in the cages. So that would be otherwise contrary to the language here. So we put in there, if the city is approving that feeding or watering, then that wouldn't be in violation. So that, it's pretty straightforward. Happy to answer any, any questions. If city council wishes to move forward with the prohibition against feeding of wild animals other than typical birds and then feral cats and dogs, then the requested action would be to move it for first reading introduction. A public hearing is not required since it's not a zoning ordinance. But obviously, it does take two ordinance, or two meetings to adopt this. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Just a quick question. So there was nothing that covered ground feeding before? Or am I missing? This is a whole new section that's being added.
Correct. So everything you see in red line is brand new. So what we've done, we have had it in the past where we've had to address ground feeding, but that's really, it wasn't grounding feeding specifically. It was feeding feral cats in the past. So that ended up falling under the nuisance, the nuisance ordinance, animals creating a nuisance. So this is actually a better, it's a clearer, it's specifically driven towards that, that end.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trent?
Oh, okay. So give me a minute here. I do appreciate all the work that you do for the city, Councilwoman Hauser, and your dedicated, dedication to addressing blight and your work on the planning commission and development. And your concern for our feral cat issue show how much you care. And there's been a lot of recent success with that. But I don't advocate for ground feeding of wildlife. As I understand, at the state level, it is deemed illegal. However, in my opinion, this level of government interference and how this ordinance change is worded is, I feel excessive, and I don't think it's very enforceable. I personally have not had very many opportunities to hear from anybody who is complaining about ground feeding. But that, you know, maybe that's neither here nor there. I did knock on a lot of doors. Ground feeding was not, or just feeding wildlife. They would not use the term ground feeding. That was not talked to me about. While I understand that the intent may not be to regulate which trees and shrubs people can plant in their gardens, the wording that includes direct and indirect feeding could include a garden, a pumpkin left on your, you know, with Halloween and a little raccoon or some rodent, like, whatever you want to call it, or mammal shows up, starts eating it. And your neighbor who may not, who might have gotten a little miffed with you, might turn you in. And I find that, you know, the indirect is a problem. I also think that when you have trees that are dropping mulberries and walnuts, black walnuts and others, that that animal could pick it up. And you, if you have to run out there and like, you know, pick it up right away, is that indirect feeding? And I know that that is not what you meant, but when I'm thinking in chess moves, that is what I started reading into it. But I feel like the goal is to remind people not to field wildlife on the ground. And I suggest including that reminder in a newsletter and providing a link to more information on the city's website, because winter is coming. The animals look a little hungry. Then we get to bird feeders. I don't know how many bird feeders there are in Rochester. But does that mean that bird feeder owners must comply with these new laws and take, go measure their bird feeder at four feet? Or are they're grandmothered in to keep your bird feeder if it's three feet high? So, have you ever tried to outsmart a squirrel? I have, because I have a bird's feeder, and the squirrel is winning. I know of a senior who lives at Pink Creek condos who has a walker. She goes out there, feeds the birds every day, but I don't know if she can get down and clean up the seeds that will fall off, which would be a civil infraction. So moreover, enforcing this rule seems impractical and could significantly burden the authorities. A violation with a civil infraction would be another example of unnecessary governance overreach. So another point of concern is the impact of the, oh, and I think I talked about the existing ones. Will they be, will they, you know, how do you comply with all this? Who will be responsible for enforcement? Will there, how many tickets do you think would be issued? I think a lot, if you actually went around looking for this problem. And then I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm assuming this is a recommendation of the Community Cat Committee?
It actually predated the Cat Committee.
Predated it. Okay. Sidebar question on the Community Cat Committee. Are there, the triple C, are there residents on the triple C?
Well, there's the three.
There's three councilmembers.
Councilpeople. Councilmember Hauser or Councilmember King?
There's not a direct residence on the committee per se, but we're working with residents in certain pockets that are helping. And in order to capture the cats, you do need to feed them. Also, if they, so I, I think the way, I think this is a little too far-reaching, just in general. That was my, it's my personal view. I, I don't want to over-govern everything that we do. I also don't want to encourage people to leave out, you know, food for animals. That's not great either. But I, I think the way this is written, there's some issues with it, if you want to nitpick. But you do have to feed the cats. The TNR program, there is a release component. Not every single one of these cats is going to be able to be rehomed. There's kittens. They're going to go find homes. There may be some cats that are returned to the community. If people are feeding those cats, if they're living in the community, I don't know. I guess that's something we have to address.
So, so based on our previous discussions around this issue, we've always discussed TNR as well. And I was hopeful that that portion would be included in whatever ordinance we finally agree upon. If, if we truly believe in that method, and we have support from many other government agencies to say that that's the most humane way to do it, then we should codify it in an ordinance. Particular to this version of the ordinance, my issue would be on the water. So imagine I'm a dog owner, and I have my dog out in the yard running around, but I put a bowl of water down on my deck. Am I violating this ordinance?
Not if you're feeding your dog. This is wild animals.
You mean if you leave it out there?
Okay.
Wild animals.
What if a wild animal wanders over and drinks out of the bowl?
What about a birdbath? They still sell birdbaths, and they're far less than forty-eight inches off the ground. That's an open standing water reservoir. Is that illegal?
No, it's not a birdbather. I mean, it's a, it's a birdbath. It's not...
Right. But it could also be, animals could go drink from that.
Certainly.
But that doesn't violate, I mean, a feral cat goes up into that.
I, I think when the prohibition is against feeding wild animals, I don't think having a birdbath is, I mean, if you'd like exclusion of having birdbaths, happy to do so. This is, this is a discussion.
No, I don't want to exclude birdbaths.
The Councilperson Jones, hand your hand up, please.
I, I agree with Sarah, and I did think about this earlier today. I love the energy put around this. And it has been something that has come up from the community about the feeding. So this, this, to me, was presented by residents, which is why this all came about. I think it's, it is far-reaching. So I think their first reading, first talking about it, I think there's a way to compromise on it. Start with this, and then maybe take some pieces out, because it does feel like government involvement has gone a little bit too far. That's just, yeah. But thank you for all your work on this, Christian, because you worked very hard.
Councilmember Hauser, I assume you would have something to say?
I have no problem with the comments. That's why we have this process. This is exactly why we do this. But to give some context and give some, some background in this. So the idea is, is that we understand that as part of this process with the feral cats, they're going to be released back into the community where they are. And people are going to feed those cats, okay? And the reality is, is what we're trying to do through this ordinance is to make sure that if there's going to be feeding, it's a designated person or persons and not fourteen people on the same street, which doesn't really do anything to solve the problem. So it would be the exclusion for people who we've identified and who have agreed to say, hey, I will be in charge of feeding this cat or these cats, okay? So it doesn't have everyone doing it, which creates this, this cycle. The second part is, is, is for, you know, this idea that birdbathers and stuff, forty-eight inches, thirty-six, twenty-four, I don't think the height is, is determinative of a prohibition. It's just, that's an arbitrary number. It could be whatever inches off the ground. And to the extent that we want to make other changes that seem a little bit more suited for this particular city, by all means, that's what we have the conversation for. But I don't expect there to be a seven oh, or this goes in right away. That's, that's why it was. It was just to make sure that people aren't leaving cans of tuna fish on every porch that they have, because there's cats on the street. That's, that's the reality of it.
Good. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. So for my part, thank you, Councilmember Hauser, for your comments, because I was kind of waiting to hear your thoughts on this. You're a smart guy. There's, certainly was a reason why you wanted us to take a look at this. From, from my perspective, I, I agree with Councilmember King. I like less government, less, less involvement. I personally feel like we want to be responsive to our residents who brought an issue, but yet I think we've started down this process with our Cat Committee, our triple C Committee. And I think this is just, we're just not ready to codify anything here. I'd like to have some more input from the Cat Committee, some residents, kind of see where we think this should go. You know, kind of doing some research of, you know, neighboring communities, communities similar to us. I don't see anyone having this as part of their municipal ordinances. So at this time, I'd like to just put this on hold, maybe table it, and come back to it, maybe upon a recommendation from the Cat Committee.
Just because I got that from Dearborn Heights. So that was, right. So other municipalities do have it, but I appreciate everything that has been discussed.
Councilmember Trent?
I would agree with Mayor Protem Salvia that if, we are on a pilot program with this TNR and totally agree with Councilmember Hauser's reasoning, but it, it's not in this. So if the Cat Committee, you know, the fact that you find a designated person to feed that one cat, because that's not in here, I would make a motion to table it till we can take a look at it with the Cat Committee. And, 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 you know, whenever if anybody else wants to say more, they can. So we could take that into consideration.
Mr. Clerk, do we need a motion to table it, or we just, can we head nod table it?
I believe a motion.
Need a motion?
I believe the motion was, was made, so if someone would like to second it, and you guys could vote on it.
Sure. I made one, you made one, so.
Okay, I will support it. I will support Mayor Protem Salvia.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Trent, to table this and to maybe refer it back to the triple C. That's what we call it now.
Triple C.
Triple, yeah. That's Council Cat Committee. Community, community.
Community Cat Committee.
Quadruple, triple C.
Quadruple C. It's in three.
Is there discussion on that, Councilmember Jones?
Just one other point. Since this came out, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Hauser, the feral cat situation, I'm just wondering if when we discuss all this and think about, should this just be related to that particular problem? Just something to think about, rather than broad stroke all wildlife? Because have we had any other issues with people feeding skunks or possum or, you know, is it something? Okay. Because I've never heard anyone talk about that. I've only heard about the feral cat feeding. So, okay, okay.
Not rampant, but a couple of years.
So it's worthy of covering more than just cats. Okay.
Councilmember Hauser?
Oh, no, I'm all set. Thank you for asking that.
And before we do, I just also like to thank Councilmember Hauser for putting that work in. We all appreciate that. Get us started on this. I think we're making pretty good progress, at least getting started. Councilmember King?
I just want to ask a quick question. Just curious, Nick, from your experience, the issues that we have had, how have they been dealt with? Have we come to an easy resolution?
One, not so easy, one easy. So there, it's been random. Normally, the neighborhood pressure relieves it, but we've had a couple, two, that we ended up having to go to court, actually. But most of the...
What do we use as a basis?
A nuisance, creating nuisance. It was possums. And if, if you leave food chunks out, you tend to draw those things. One was kitty corn from my backyard. The guy was housing them. Not necessarily on purpose, but we had to take him a long way. Took, what, two years to get that guy to stop. Yeah, no, that was the guy in the corner.
Was it cats?
Yeah. No, different guy. No, probably was cats, yeah. But yeah, it's been some possums and skunk situations, so.
Councilmember Trent?
No, that's fine.
Councilmember Jones?
Just one other quick thing. I know years ago that my husband's stepfather was feeding the deer. I were two hundred dollars a month worth of, out the back. And Rochester Hills put into place, so we might want to look at what they did. They have an ordinance. You cannot feed, I think it's specific.
I have looked at it. It's...
To the deer, maybe, specific. Okay, yeah, all right.
Yeah, we have issues today. People that, that know better are hand-feeding the deer in the cemetery. And you can walk right up to them. They'll come right in your car now. So again, it's fun, but it's, today, when I was coming back, six were walking down the sidewalk. My Pete Brady was herding the deer, like, get out of the neighborhood, go back in the cemetery. He literally, they walk right next to him and walk right back into the cemetery. It's the coolest thing. It's cute until they eat everything you own, so.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. And do we have any, is the triple C going to meet anytime soon? Or is there a plan?
Mm-hmm.
I got an email today that I think Ms. King caught, what, six cats?
I'm sorry. I wasn't... Oh, five. I reached out to the committee.
We received a, an email from you this, or, yeah.
That was from me.
Oh, that was from Sarah. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The cat that I mentioned, that I thought was pregnant in our community, that has a distinct little route to the south of me. And I said, when, the night that Cheryl Phillips was here, I expected a pregnancy because of the roundedness. She delivered kittens. And I was able to get the kittens yesterday evening. And I was able to entice her. Going to be real honest, the only way to get her back near those kittens was, was food. And the food was on the ground. Okay? But I got her, and I was able to get her into a carrier. And then I started reaching out immediately. I spent an hour in the rain to do it, because here's the thing. Either you get those babies when they're newborn with the mother. It's the easiest. That mom instinct is there, and they're going to meow if you handle them. And that's exactly what happened. And then I had to reach out after that. And we have good people here. And then I was working. I put that in there. I had to leave for work this morning. I only have two more workdays as of right now, so it'd be for that. But I will tell you, when I came home tonight, and I was in touch with those that were helping to take the kittens with the mother in so that she could continue to nurse, those things are only like, maybe forty-eight hours old now. There were five babies and the mother. And the mother couldn't have been more than, under a year old. I don't think she even weighed five pounds, which is wrong how she did it. And I know now more who the males are by the color of the kittens, which I do see in the area. And one goes down Taylor Street, and two go down Castell. They're still headed south, unfortunately. And they have to be caught. Those are the males. And I will tell you, I was very grateful. When I came home this evening, I had eight private messages from people reaching out in the community to foster, help me take them, provide for them. And it made me feel really good. And Sarah reached out. Marilyn has been in touch and reached out. And I'm happy to say, even our former mayor reached out. There were multiple people reaching out to help to take them, to make sure that they were safe and off the streets. And I'm certain the babies will get adopted. Mother will get spayed, and hopefully, she's going to be adopted. She's just a little thing. And you know what? We just have to keep it up. We have to. It'll work. It will work. It takes, it takes a village to get this under control again.
Councilmember Hauser?
Thank you, Pat. Sir, I have one quick question. Where, where are those cats now? Do you have them in your house? Where are they?
I have a cat in my house, and her name is Butters.
Where are the ones that you trapped?
They're not at home.
Could you share where they are?
Do I have to tell them? I, my good friend Officer Parker picked them up this morning very early when I was at work. And they have gone to Oakland County. And knowing Oakland County and having even talked with them, they are going to be going into rescue to foster.
Thank you.
And you're worried if one's going to come back. I see the look.
No, I just want to know if they were let back out in the community, we had to trap them again, or...
You don't let. They're this big.
I, I don't know.
They're brand, they're, they were like twenty-four hours old.
Wow. Okay.
And you don't let those out. That's why I stayed out an hour in the rain last night. I got soaked. That poor little mother cat was scared. She ended up getting soaked. But in the end, contained, safe, nursed, taken care of, warm, and then stay on the phone for a few hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Okay. Next, on to consideration and ordinance amendment to section eight hundred of the zoning code, second reading and adoption. City manager?
I understand the last meeting that this was passed first reading adoption, I believe, four to three. So tonight would be protocol to take it to second reading for consideration.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to second reading and adoption.
Support. Motion by the Mayor Protem. Support by Councilmember Sage. Further discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
No.
Motion passes. Next is consideration to approve the city manager signing the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five police school liaison budget.
Chief?
Chief, come on up.
Hey, like, want just short meeting, so maybe a little background would be nice to have on this.
Educate us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, the form that was submitted, the Rochester Community Schools submit this every year. They have a school liaison program. And there's currently six police officers assigned to all the Rochester Community Schools. Two of the officers are from the city of Rochester. So they're full-time. Officer Dramer and Officer Chisum, they do an exceptional job there. So each year, the finance department will provide the school district with their salaries. That includes their fringe benefits and also the use of the police vehicles, because they're both assigned to police vehicles. So if you look at this sheet from July through December of twenty-four, they're charging, they want one hundred and seven thousand eight thirty-one. That's our cost. And through January through June of twenty-five, our cost would be one seventy-one, one seventy-four. And again, that's for their wages, fringe, fringe benefits, and the use of the police car. Now, we have a partnership between Rochester Hills, Oakland Township. So we all pay a proportion of their salaries, and that's based on the number of students that attend from each district. So our cost for the city of Rochester is twenty-three and a half percent for this year, which is pretty consistent with last year, maybe off, maybe a half percent, something like that. So this letter that the school had sent out, it just basically, they want you, as a council, to review it and to agree to the costs and to allow the city manager to sign off on it. That's all this is.
Councilmember Jones?
First, I want to say, they are a great asset to us, that they are in those two schools. And the relationship they build with the students, I cannot say enough about how important it is to have. And it's great that we're represented in there. My other question is, sometimes they will do, just curious... My other question is, sometimes they will do, just curious mind, overtime, probably, I assume, because it's in the evenings, at the board of ed meetings? Is that something that the, the school district covers?
Yes, if you look at the sheet there, they pay for materials and expenses, $5,000 a year. Cell phone for six officers is $12,400 and for overtime.
Oh, sorry.
$40,000 for all six. Like school events, football games, things of that nature.
Okay.
They pay the overtime. I think our officers, most of the time, they take comp time in lieu of the overtime, but they do compensate them for that.
That comes completely from our CS. Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Sage.
I'll support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Further discussion. I've, I've said this before, as a high school teacher, absolutely need these officers in the school. It is money well spent for everybody's safety. And in today's world, we need these people in the schools. Mr. Clerk, the roll, please. Bixson? Yes. Salvia?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Next, your report on regular business, receipt of the check register. If there's any questions. Councilmember Jones?
Actually, Chief, I have a question, I think, for you. Real quick, sorry. I have two quick questions. The, the Police Academy OCC for the 5850, so is there an officer that's being trained right now, or is that a new officer? Is that, that's to become a policeman, that training?
We have a, one of our parking enforcement officer is attending the Police Academy. That's Oakland County. He will graduate sometime in December. And we received, it was a little bit over $25,000 in grant funding that pays for the academy and it pays for his wages while he's in the academy.
So that's pretty awesome, that he's getting promoted. I bet that's pretty exciting to have someone.
He's a great, great, be a great applicant, or great officer here.
Compliments to you to promote like that. Because that's, I'm sure, very exciting for him.
He's gonna do a good job here.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. And then I have one other quick question, but I think it would be an Anthony question. But I'll, I'll throw it out there. There was on here, overpayment of summer tax, and it's a lot of funds in there. Do we know what that, if you don't know, I'll get with Anthony.
I'll get, I'll get an answer. Anthony would be appropriate.
I would think maybe one resident overpaid, but this is a lot and a substantial amount. So, okay.
Another question.
No worries.
Councilmember Trent?
Well, I have a question. Sherman Nursery Farms, what was the tree planting project that they did?
So in the spring and the fall, we plant, so that was the spring planting?
For what areas?
I can get you a list. There's, there's 17 trees.
Say, just go around the community. Okay, okay, never mind.
It was through the tree committee and then we approved it. But I've got a list.
Okay, that's all right, then. I just didn't know. All right, thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Next, onto a report from various boards and commissions. First, a report from the zoning board of appeals, Mr. City Manager.
I'll take that. So a couple of weeks ago, I had two cases. First case was on South Castell. It's a home that was built in 1903 and it's kind of neat when we run into these situations where the home was built parallel to the front lot line, but it's on a trapezoid lot, if you can picture that. So as, it was a non-conforming home since it was built because of the way the lot lines worked out. The folks that bought the home wanted to put significant amount of money in a little addition that was seven feet wide in the back to push out their kitchen. So there's about one foot 11 inches that would be non-conforming adding out of the existing home. So we took that to the zoning board, showed that they could have cannilyered it. There's a bunch of different ways to do it, but the zoning board felt because of the practical difficulty of the existing lot line not being parallel, they approved that. So that was taken care of. Then second was the two requests from the DDA to go for the gram. So both were approved. The carports were approved because it helped that the adjacent property owner, which was the Mitchellfields, got with Huntington Bank, their tenant, and agreed that actually it would be a good thing to kind of block that side off. So that was approved. We looked at, it was a robust discussion, actually. We brought up the presentation, showed them other options, moved the shade structures to the upper level, which would eliminate parking. And so they weighed all of that, they approved that. And then the non-conforming situation, because they're only affecting themselves because they're the adjacent property owner, they also approved that. So the original ask would go forward, not having to jock the building in and being able to build the shade structure. So we were good to go.
I have a question.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, so my understanding was that on the gram with the shade structure, the car, there can be parking.
Oh, absolutely.
But there couldn't on the upper lot if they put the-
No, there could have been.
There could have been.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. So they chose the gram?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? Okay. All right. But yeah, you can still park. Great. I misunderstood.
Very good. Thank you.
That was it.
Next is a report from the bonding workshop. Mr. City Manager, just give a brief-
Yeah, I, I think all of you were energized. I think all of us were energized. That was one of the best meetings I've been part of, so for the public watching, we had council-
Was that that looking?
Lot of energy there.
There was a lot of energy.
Was that that happy face you had?
I know, yeah. I might not have looked like it, but I was feeling it. So, no, the, for the public watching, so we had a meeting where we wanted to talk about how do we reinvest or continue to invest in our community? And finance did a great job laying out options. We know we have a fund balance. We know there are big projects, the community house and the skate park and other projects down the line that we wanted to look at. So we spent, what, three and a half hours together with a lot of good dialogue back and forth to come to a conclusion about how we would handle the future projects. So in the end, we ended up bonding for $2 million, which we had already planned on in the previous bitch, previous, I'm sorry, 2.5 million. Yep. Also, it's $500,000 for the skate park, $2 million for the community house, and then, and then we were lucky enough to know that-
700 for the-
I'm sorry. No, I meant, we had two, I meant, so we had $2 million grant-
Right.
-for the $2 million expenditure and we had 700,000 that would go into the bonding process. So 700, 500. Then the balance of the sweet spot, which was 2.5 million, would be to, for projects like the trailhead, if we have to pay for that, or the blowout of the trail, but other infrastructure projects that we could use that money for appropriately, which would have to come back to council for expenditure. So it was a really good meeting. I think staff felt like we accomplished a lot. I feel like from the input I got from you folks, you felt the same way. So that was very well done.
Very good. Next is a report from the Rochester Community House. Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia?
Certainly. So speaking in the community house, the board met on the 17th, not surprisingly, a lot of discussion around the building, you know, looking back over minutes and agendas for probably the past seven years. I think that's pretty much all we've been talking about is trying to get to this point. So, you know, talked a lot about timeline for renovation and, you know, would really like to start on the south end of the building as soon as funding is available. There's some, I'll say, issues that if we can address them this fall, that will be good as well as it could save some cost. So waiting for, Alan met with Anthony late last week, but timeline on revenue, renovation could cause some interruption for some of the rooms, like room C, room D. But the community house, the organization is working through that plan. If need be, they would put a tent outside, so kind of more to come on that. Also, working on fundraising for the interior. We reviewed the financials and we will be meeting again in November.
Very good. I think that's exciting times at the community house. Next is a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, Councilmember Sage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Pink Creek Trails master plan process has officially begun and we now have a live survey link for public input towards that master plan document. I've shared it with city administration and we'll get it posted on the city website. You also have a copy in front of you to provide your input as well. The Labor Day Bridgewalk was successful. We raised through sponsorship and donation, oh, over $2,400. So to keep that in perspective, we raised $1,900 last year and that was the most ever. So we did quite well. There is an update to the Soleronics property remediation. They are fully aware, we did have to send them a, a letter based on the initiation of the actions taken here on this body to start the clock. They came back, recognized everything we said, but politely reminded us that until the sale between Soleronics and Champion Development, their hands are tied in terms of the remediation. And we understand that and agree. So as soon as that happens, we know that it will move forward. Very good. Any news on the sale of that?
Yeah, it's just paperwork that they're going through, so.
It's supposed to be done two weeks ago, so there, nothing's holding it up. It's just grinding through the process, so.
Yeah. Councilmember King?
Councilmember Sage, I have a question for you or just something I'd like to, for you to raise, maybe at the next discussion, or maybe you can answer. But I've noticed lately, when out running on the trails, that, I don't know if it's the time of year, but people may have been out with horses more often than in the past. There is a lot of mess on the trail. I don't know what are, how it is handled, like if each section of the trail has different ordinances based on where it falls. But it's really, it's really disappointing because if somebody was out with their dog and they were leaving that behind, people would be up in arms. And like, I, I just find it a little bit disgusting. So it would be really lovely if there's a way that we can potentially look to address that.
We do have a trail patroller, if you will, and supposed to report that. It generally falls under the municipality which the, that section of the trail falls under. We don't have a dedicated resource with the trail itself to go and clean up the road So it does fall back on an individual community.
Do you, do you know by chance, though, if the ordinance is, they do make contraptions that can basically hang from a horse to catch-
Yes.
-their apples? Right? So I've seen those before. I saw somebody out with a small carriage with their horse and they definitely did not have one of those. And they were one of, I think, the people leaving stuff behind. So I don't know if-
I can, yes.
-if we need to push some enforcement or we don't have the right tools in place to be able to enforce?
We can bring that up at the next meeting.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Interesting.
It's been, it's been bad lately, I don't know.
Just- Councilmember Hauser?
Are these the sheriff horses or these private horses?
I, I do the private horses.
Yeah, you can, you can bring your horse out there.
I didn't know that. Oh, yeah.
It stops, so you can't, you can only bring them.
It's like, it's generally north of Dutton, although there's some between Tinkin and Dutton still.
Really? Okay.
Yeah. I haven't seen much of them.
I always see the sheriff ones out there. I didn't realize people actually take the private ones.
I don't always see the horses. I only see one.
Just see the leftovers.
I see leftovers, yeah.
Yes, okay.
I haven't seen the county all year, or some.
I haven't either.
And I will tell you, they added a second restroom. I don't know if this is a permanent one, but they added a second one at Tinkin and I was very pleased to see that. So, thank you, Steve.
Okay. He dropped it off.
Take full credit for that.
While we're at it, in the restroom up by, up by, way up there?
Yes. Fox and Road?
I see, I see a thing.
I know, I know.
I, I don't want to go there. I'm not gonna say it.
We're well aware, we're well aware of that issue.
Yeah. Hold it to you a little.
Exactly.
Oh, my.
All right, well, that's called the nitty gritty of government.
You could call it that.
Next is a report from the Rochester Avon Recreation, Ra-Ra. Councilmember King?
Thanks. Just a couple of things from Ra-Ra. They have been honored with a nomination for the Community Collaboration Award, the Sunrise Pinnacle Awards, recognizing organizations that make meaningful impact through innovative partnerships. So the team is very excited about that. And then I did want to just raise to everyone's attention that there is the Football Frenzy 5K. On October 12th, there will be cider and donuts afterwards. I am going to be participating in that. So maybe my two daughters, they want to do it as well. So we were out practicing, running on Sunday weekend, but I'd love to have you join. And then the, if you haven't seen it yet, the hammock park is up behind the building and I think it turned out phenomenal. It's been, it was actually, we spent some time there on Saturday after the farmer's market and saw some other kids out there, too. And it was a lot of fun. It was really nice. So definitely get out there. There's gonna be more enhancements added, I think, some additional, like big type yard games, whether it's a giant checker chessboard or something like that. Some of the stuff you might have to check out from the front desk, but they're putting the hammocks up whenever they're open, so they're out there and you can just go and enjoy them. Great place to relax, have a book, or just a break from the trail. So, it's awesome.
Thank you. Next is a report from the OPC. Mayor Pro Tem Salvio.
Yep, got that one. We met September 19th. Renee gave the director's report and facility renovation update. Some, nine new HEVAC units are coming in this month, and actually early October. So the building will be closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday in early October to put those in. Also, an emergency intercom system is coming in, so I think that's a good improvement, and several other really important improvements in the building. Wanted to highlight the 50-plus Expo is happening September 26th from 9:00 to 1:00. So that's when you can walk around the OPC and get all sorts of free goodies and giveaways and all sorts of information. So make sure you check that out. And we kind of breezed through the, most of the business of the meeting because we worked on the strategic plan for the OPC. So in the past, that has been done once every five years. This time going forward is going to be a rolling strategic plan, which I think is a really nice innovative approach, where we went through it, and then a year from now, we're just going to bring it back out again and look at it as we go into the budget, kind of like what we do here at the city. So good improvement there. Really good feedback, really focusing on, you know, the big change that's happened since the last strategic plan was transportation. You know, we went from, you know, doing some transportation to now $2 million a year of transportation through Oakland County. So really good discussion at the board, great meeting.
Thank you. Next is a report from the Cemetery Committee. Councilmember Jones.
I always want to giggle when I'm doing a report on the cemetery committee. I know something about that. We met on 9/17, and we pretty much discussed what was discussed here when he presented, just putting in the 70 to 77 new monuments. And it appears there are, Brian Rowe testified, there's waiting, people waiting that are going to probably purchase those. So the idea is that we would use some of those funds, which potentially maybe we do the fence. We're looking at our pricing to see if we can increase that a bit. I am going to meet with Dave Carter, who appears to be the cemetery expert as far as working on the tombstones and cleaning them and repairing them because of the Daughters from the American Revolution, how they want to do that section. I think we've sort of decided that we want to be cautious how many we do. It is a deed owned by someone else. So I think we're probably going to do just the oldest corner where those soldiers are buried. So that's sort of where we're at right now. But we have plenty of time, because I don't think the celebration's till 2026.
But it'll take three months.
Yeah, it'll take a while to clean them, yeah. So we're still in the discussion, but I'm looking forward to touring with Dave, and he is the expert. It was interesting even talking to him on the phone. So we were his first client, so he has a passion about our cemetery, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Next is a report from the.
I think we already did that, didn't we? Oh, no, emergency, sorry.
The City Council's Special Meeting for Emergency Readiness Training. Mr. City Manager, want to give a.
Now, that was high energy, too. That was.
That was high energy.
That was high energy. That was, maybe I was thinking of that meeting, actually.
There's so many of them, right?
So many, a lot of energy in the city.
But I think, thank you, Chief, and everybody that was prepared participated. But I think everybody's eyes got open to the level of, the level of need to follow detail and know who's on first. I think, Mayor, when you said, I just want a final answer on who makes the last call, what expert is going to make that call, not just, it's not a political decision, it's not a staff decision, the proper people are doing it. So, again, everybody here that was there, for the two that couldn't make it, we want to sit down with you guys and probably bring you up to speed on that, because it really laid it out. I think it made everybody feel better, like we know where the silos are, people know what to do and how to handle it. So it was a great exercise. Chief was very pleased with everybody's participation. So that was a really good meeting.
Very good. I think next, we already talked about the bonding workshop.
Yeah.
So on to General miscellaneous. First, is there any further public comment? Kane, come on up.
Thank you. Patricia Kane, 817 West Fourth Street. And first of all, again, gratitude, Sarah, Marilyn, and everybody that was reaching out. A couple of things. Certification for monarch, certification for pollinator, certification for bird, certification for backyard wildlife habitat. The Wildlife Federation of the United States has right now over 300,000 private residences certified. And speaking with them, and going back and forth from Friday through the weekend, by 2030, they will be 1.5 to 2 million residences totally certified. But they think they will far exceed that. They do not even have the 2024 numbers on because they are processing so much. That is only one federation. They have partnered with over 200 municipalities across the United States. There are whole cities certified for wildlife, backyard certification, 200. There are schools that are certified for it, churches certified for it, libraries, and municipal buildings, all with certifications, 200 of them and growing. Next, the United States Department of Forestry has now partnered and is partnering with multiple agencies across the United States to fill in gaps. They interviewed, I forgot how many thousands of people across the United States, but all residents, all in cities, to find out that 82% of them want some form of certification or protection for biodiversity. And they said it's growing. So now the U.S. Department of Forestry not only is offering grants to municipalities to help on the city or public side, but is starting to engage not only with the different certifications, like through Audubon. Audubon has one. All of our big entities have certification. And an example why we can't get a concrete number, because it is more, it's in the millions and millions across the United States, is, an example is North Carolina. North Carolina and the state of Washington have their own certifications. And I think North Carolina right now, I think when I roughly added it in my head, is probably 17,000 in that state alone. So when you start to add this, and the reason why is our U.S. government has now come under the notice that our wildlife is disappearing, our green is disappearing because of cities expanding to all brick and mortar, and there's no place for animals to go. Then we take what should have been green, and we're dissecting it with playgrounds, and by that I mean entertainment, pathways for all kinds of sports, snowmobiling, ski trails, this, everything that is disruptive, and roadways with infrastructure being expanded. So their goal is right now to try to bridge this in the cities, bringing forests and meadows, bridging, making things safer. So we help preserve what is natural in that state and throughout the community before we started building everything up. People want it. So there are ways to do this and ways to do it appropriately. And to get the right information out there and not the misinformation that unfortunately we see circulated so many times at municipal levels, which isn't right. But I'm just telling you, now that I only have two more workdays left, a total of 17 hours, I will be stepping back in to engage in community. One of them will be the charities, which I have missed for the last few years, but certainly stepping back into what I can do, what I can bring to fruition, bring to platforms, and gosh knows, I've done it before, and to engage. Now, on another note, Nick, I'm going to need your help. We got to find me, somebody that can clip the trees before my guys can come. And the reason why, many of you don't know it. Did you know fawns have to be released by October 1st, mandatory in the state? We have a ton of fawns that are going to be released, and there's two things they eat, which will feed them now and will feed them where they are released, and put piles out for them before they turn brown. One of them is grapevine, that's all they eat, and the other is mulberry. And I have non-fruiting mulberry on one side of the tree from a trim. I need those trimmed, because, and it's going to go to dog. I'm going to be honest with you. It goes to Detroit Animal Welfare Group, which is in Washington, Romeo. And the reason why is when we release these fawns, which is a tremendous amount, whether they can, whether it or not, we try to fatten them up, and that's all they eat. So we've put out the SOS for grapevines right now that are not dried, and mulberry. And my tree trimmers aren't coming yet for, and I know you tried to help, Nick, and thank you so much, but we had those storms and they couldn't. And then they had COVID. But we're looking for that. So, yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, Marilyn.
What do you mean by grapevine?
Grapevines, with the leaves and regular grapevine.
Yeah.
We cut the vines. We don't take anything from public land at all, roadside or anything. Or we don't go into like, to the forest and take the wild grape. But any grapevine that people donate off their property, because a lot of people grow grapes for coverage and the fruiting and everything, they donate.
They just donate it where?
They just cut them when they shear them down for the year.
Yeah.
Bundle them up, and we, that's it.
Take it to your house?
They eat them.
Take it to Pat's house?
Part of people donate. People donate.
To where?
Dog.
Oh.
Detroit Animal Welfare Group.
And where you said, okay.
And that's where we need right now, because Shorts has enough, but we need it for dog. And they did put out, like I said, the SOS. So it's mulberry. Here we go again. And it has to be cut now before they dry.
Yeah, I've got grape. I've got a grape vine that needs to be cut.
Things like this that help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Megan?
No.
Thank you. No one's online.
Thank you. Next on to miscellaneous. Mr. City Manager.
Again, just start your thoughts, and I think most people know Randy McClure and Karen, who are building official, and his wife Karen works the front desk. Their daughter, Randa, passed away. Funerals yesterday. She was only 40 years old. So the staff here did a great job of getting donations and for them. They're very deep people, and it was tough on the family. So if you see Randy or Karen, give them a hug, and as we all do. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk.
Just a quick election update. We got the ballots for the November general election last week. So we're going to be stuffing all of the envelopes to mail out all of our absentee voters by the end of this week. So if you're in need of an absentee ballot, you can come in and get those now.
Thank you. It's going to be quite a fall. Mr. City Attorney.
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember King. Mayor Pro Tem Salvio.
Yes, thank you. First off, I'd like to thank Chief George for the report that you gave all of council regarding the parking system, parking tickets, where we collect. I think that's some really good data, and look forward to seeing that monthly. I think that'll help all of us make some good decisions. Secondly, last week on the 17th, I participated at the, our training center. Oakland County had that technical training day. It was really impressive to see all of the people and the resources from all around Oakland County. And, you know, I learned quite a bit, learned that our tiny little city, Rochester, once again has a resource that is one of the, not the best, but one of the best training facilities in our county for technical rescue. So they had cars that were trapped under cement, and the guys were working on how to get cars slash people freed from the cement, supporting buildings. So I was not there a long time, but I saw a lot and learned a lot. And then lastly, just a shout out and a thank you to the DDA for the magical mural tour, which is still happening. So yes, Art and Apples is over, but you can enjoy the murals in downtown and in the park. There's 21 murals all throughout the area, and I've noticed that they did a really good job of placement of the murals. You know, like the one on the Roxy kind of matches the Roxy. And then here's the proud auntie moment. My niece is one of the artists, so one of the three murals in the park was done by my niece. So proud auntie moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Sage.
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Jones.
A couple of quick things. One, I went to the tour of the, at the Department of Public Works, the water system. And Pat McKay was there, and Cody, is it Bendick?
Corey.
Corey, I'm sorry, not Cody. Corey did an incredible job, like a big shout out to him. He was nervous, and he was great, and he was knowledgeable, and I am glad I did it. I know there's a couple of council members that are going to go in the future. I will do it again, just to digest it all. There was lots of information, and like the history of our water system and the water quality in Rochester. It was, one acre of land was purchased in 1895. And then we have 24 total acres now. And we are very lucky. I know we have two different water sources for the residents of Rochester, but we are so lucky that we have those municipal wells. So I feel grateful for that. And then also, I had talked to the city manager about featuring nonprofits at our meetings. I, we are so lucky to have so many nonprofits in the city of Rochester. And so to bring attention to them, our community partners, maybe once a month, if it's not a heavy agenda, we will feature a local nonprofit. And I think maybe we'll start with Raya, just because that's one that we also report on. So maybe we'll do that in two weeks if it's not a heavy agenda. And then the final thing is, because we won't meet before I do a report, I have a Raya meeting tomorrow, is that on Tuesday, October 1st, Officer Amy Dreamer is going to be doing a, at the public library, an event, Young and Vulnerable, Addressing the Risks of Social Media Drugs and Peer Pressure for RCS and parents, community. That's it.
Councilmember Trent.
Yes, I attended the water treatment plant tour a second time, and I learned even more the second time, and it was really, really well done. And I really appreciated Corey and Pat McKay's information. And Corey can answer any questions. And I asked how good the water was. I asked if it was as good as bottled, and it's as good as bottled water. They tested a lot, and for all sorts of pollutants, and they keep it very, very safe. So that was it.
Very good. Councilmember Howser.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay. I'd just like to thank everybody for having that Saturday morning meeting, council and staff, and then our Monday meeting, our budget meeting. I thought it was both very effective. And also thank everybody for their time and commitment, staff and council. So now we are planning on going into a closed session. Mr. City Attorney without, coming out, without.
Correct.
Okay, without the idea of coming out of the meeting.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session with no intent to return.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam, Mr. Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvio.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
And Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break, clear the room, and then we will.
Clear the room.
There you go.
Do the meeting.